Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,205th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary Platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petitioner requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Karen Magno is here. Chairman Rochelle?
Is here.
And Mrs. De Naro stepped out, but she is here.
Yes, she is here. And also with us tonight, we have Scott Miller, Jacob Uhaysey, and Stephanie Reese from our planning staff, who will be assisting us as we go through the meeting. For people who haven't been to one of these meetings before in our audience, the format is that we will read out each of the items that is on our agenda. Our staff will give background information on the agenda item to us. We may have some questions for them, and then we'll have the petitioner come forward and speak to their petition. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against any of these items will be given an opportunity to speak after that. And then, once we've heard from everybody, we'll make our decision on the item. And also, I do want to apologize for the late start to this meeting. There was a little technical difficulties, and we will not have the ability to show the petitions on these screens that are in the room. Normally, we show them on these overhead screens as each item is brought up, and also, that's shown on television as well. So, that will not be going on tonight because of the technical difficulties. But we do have each of these petitions in our packets electronically. We'll be able to see the petitions, the floor plans, and all the other documents that have been submitted. So, with that, if our secretary is ready, please start with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2023-09-01-05, submitted by Matic Construction LLC under Sections 13.13 and 13.15 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended, requesting to rezone the property 377397 Mile Road located on the south side of 7 Mile Road between Blue Skies Drive and Glengarry Drive in the northeast quarter of Section 7 from N2 Neighborhood to C1 Local Business.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Miller?
This parcel measures 80 feet along 7 Mile Road and has a depth of 150 feet. Therefore, it's 12,000 square feet in size. It currently contains a residential house and an in-ground pool. The change of zoning would facilitate the development of an office building. The surrounding neighborhood to the west, you have an office building which is occupied by Farmers Insurance Agency that's Zone C1. To the east and south, our residential homes zoned N2. And to the north across 7 Mile Road, you have a vacant property that is zoned RUF. The existing house and pool would be removed as part of the redevelopment. The preliminary site plan shows a 2,600-square-foot building on the west half of the site. On the east half of the site would be a parking lot. Access to the site would be by a single drive off of 7 Mile Road. If this is rezoned to C1, general office is a permitted use in C1. The office building would need to go through site plan approval process for its development, and that's the extent of the petition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there correspondence from departments?
Yes. Dated October 1st, 2023, from Linda Shield, Treasurer. In accordance with your request, the Treasurer's Office has reviewed the name and address connected with the above noted petition. At this time, there are taxes due and they are delinquent. All taxes for this location that are on the 2023 tax rule will need to be paid before the demolition of this building. There's been update to that, and the taxes were paid on October 3rd of 2023, and that has been resolved.
Okay. Additional correspondence?
Yes. From Connie Kupla, Chief Accountant, received September 20th, 2023. I have reviewed the addresses and connected with the above noted petition. The following amounts are due to the City of Livonia. Unpaid water and sewer charges of $895.12 total due to the City of Livonia, $895.12. This also has been paid on September 25th of 2023 and has been resolved. The last correspondence would be in accordance, or from September 18th, 2023, from Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. In accordance with the request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed rezoning at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel is assigned the address 377397 Mile Road. Once drawings have been submitted for permits, the Engineering Department will assign additional addresses if needed. The legal description included with the submitted drawings appears to be correct and should be used in conjunction with this project should the rezoning be approved. The existing parcel is currently served by a public sanitary sewer. The water main and stormwater. The submitted drawings do not include any information regarding proposed services to the building, but we do believe that there will be any, we do not believe there will be any negative impacts to the system with the proposed usage. The proposed development will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. The submitted drawings do not indicate any stormwater information, but the developer will need to obtain stormwater permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service prior to construction. Any work within the 7 Mile right-of-way will require permitting through Wayne County. Should any additional questions to this matter, please feel free to contact the City Engineer, Mr. Todd Zillig. And that is it.
That's the correspondence. Okay, is there any questions from any of our commissioners for our planning staff? I don't see any questions from any of the commissioners. Is our petitioner in the audience? Please come forward to the podium. We'll ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Yes, Justin Di Nutelli, 377397 Mile Road.
Thank you for coming tonight, and I do want to remind both the petitioner and our fellow commissioners that this is a rezoning request, so we're going to primarily focus on the issue of the zoning of this property, although I do know you've submitted some preliminary conceptual building layouts and stuff like that to us as well, so I just want to acknowledge that.
Yes, correct, and the architect is actually here tonight if you have any questions.
Okay, great, thank you. What else would you like to tell us about your petition that you haven't already heard from our planning staff?
Nothing other than what we talked about in the study meeting. I mean, we're just a growing commercial general contractor here in Livonia, born and raised in Livonia, and want to continue to grow within Livonia. Right now, we have a shop on Amryne Road. All commercial construction activities, including our trades, our commercial vehicles, and any construction-related activities are going to remain at the Amryne Road location. The purpose of this property that we wish to rezone is to house our sales, marketing, and executives, which will not be driving commercial vehicles and will only be doing office-type related activities. It'll simply maintain as a office building. And I did review the conditional rezoning verbiage that was sent to me by Mark Tormina, and we are completely flexible and willing to accept the conditional rezoning.
Okay. And just for everyone's benefit, the discussion around conditional zoning was brought up in relation to this user having this particular zoning for the property, and if this user was to perhaps move to a bigger office or need to relocate or whatever, what would happen to this property if you were to leave? And what you're proposing is to offer a voluntary conditional, a letter stating that this zoning would be tied to your use of this property, and that if you were to leave this property, then the zoning could revert back to its former condition. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. So, thank you. Is there any questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? Ms. De Naro?
Justin, what's the timing on the demolition of the vacant house that's there?
So, I know that the City of Livonia, it was voted that the current owner, which is Ms. Loring, would have to demo the property within 60 days, otherwise, there'd be a lien on the property. Matic Construction submitted a bid to the City of Livonia for the demolition of the property, which we have not heard back on, but we are going to demo it as soon as, you know, basically, our purchase agreement is contingent on the rezoning of the property at the moment. So, if the property is cleared to rezone, we plan on demolition immediately. We've already got all the crew in place to do such.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. De Naro. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero?
I think at the study meeting, you said you did speak with the neighbors?
Yes.
And they're in favor?
Yeah, I actually grew up in the neighborhood, yeah, and everyone's excited to see the blight that exists there today go away, at least the people I spoke to.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, okay. That's a, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Karen Magno?
I know when we spoke about the rezoning of this property, there was some question about what would be required as a barrier around this property? Would there be a vinyl fence or a concrete wall? What have we found out about that, and would that be part of the agreement going forward?
Yeah, I think we prefer to do a vinyl fence rather than any other material, just in terms of cost and aesthetics, being that it backs up to a neighborhood. And then, we're, I think that's something that we want to go through the planning review when we submit our plans for the property, but we're flexible. You know, we don't have any hard stops on facade requirements, the fencing, et cetera, so we're willing to accommodate City of Livonia's requests. But right now, our plan is for a vinyl fence.
Okay. Mr. Chair, for the planning commissioners, that is a requirement when you put a, what and if you put a commercial property next to residential, you have to have some sort of barrier, right?
Correct. You have to have either a protective wall, green belt, or in this case, you could do a fence if that's what the neighbors...
Is that choice lie with the developer or the builder, or is that a choice that is understood between the two parties?
Well, it's that, or it's up to you guys to, during site plan approval. If you guys approve a fence, then that's what it would be.
Okay, thank you. So, that's the next step. Thank you.
And there is fencing that exists there today, but it's all different types of material. There's metal and vinyl and wood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions. Anything else that you'd like to state before we move to our audience members?
No, all's good, thank you.
All right. If you want to just take a seat for a moment, we'll see if there's anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this petition, and you're welcome to come forward and give your thoughts. We do have one person in the audience coming forward at this time. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tim Earl. I live at 19069 Glengarry. I live right behind the house, current, right on the corner of Glengarry and 7 Mile. Sorry, you never talk to us, so I'm not sure what neighbors...
Sir, if you could please talk to us, I'd appreciate it.
I never had a conversation with this person. All I saw was a sign outside the property saying it was going to be rezoned. So, I know absolutely nothing about what is planned for the property, what it would look like. I mean, I have had to face that current resident's home for years, and it's always looked like that, and then they took the roof off, but, you know, we were happy to see that it was going to get demolished. So, my concerns are, I just don't know what really is planned. Nothing was discussed with us, so I don't know what neighbors were consulted about future plans.
Okay. What is your thought on what you've heard so far today? Obviously, you're still learning, but what's your opinion in terms of the rezoning and development of this property?
There's already a commercial building next door to that. I'm not sure what other options are for that property other than leaving it vacant, which causes other issues. I'm not totally against it. I just, since I back up to it, it'd be nice to know what it would look like, things like that, and understand the usage, that's not an issue. It's just not a very wide site, so I don't know how that would get laid out as far as what is the traffic going to look like, just, you know, the aesthetics.
Sure. Okay, well, let me at least explain, we do have some conceptual ideas of what the hell of the property is going to be laid out. The petitioner may be able to give you some of that so that you can see it. In fact, I think he's handing it to you right now. But for what it's worth, just so you know how this process works, we're in the zoning process right now to rezone the property from its current residential zoning to this commercial use, which also includes office uses. We don't have a separate zoning for office at this point, so that's why, their intention is to use it as an office, not as a commercial building, if you want to consider it that way. But what we're going to do is make a decision today on the zoning part of the process. Once that happens, then he has to go to City Council. City Council has to approve that zoning as well, and then he's going to come back to us in a separate process called a site plan. And that's where we really get into the nitty-gritty of what the building's going to look like, how it's going to be laid out, the materials, the parking lot, the fencing, all those types of things. So, that's the second part, that's the second half of this process, if you will. So, you do have another chance, for what it's worth, to come back and watch that process as well and give your input, so I just want to share that with you.
Yeah, and as I said, I'm not opposed, I'm just surprised.
You just want to, you want to learn more about it, too?
Yeah, it does affect us in some regards, especially being close proximity.
Definitely, understand.
Obviously, anything's an improvement.
All right.
So...
Well, thank you.
And it does look nice, I'd give you that.
Can I give you my contact information?
Sure.
Have it on you?
Yeah.
All right, great. Well, thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else in our audience wishing to speak on this item, either for or against? If not, the petitioner certainly has a chance to make a last comment if he wants to. I think he's already had a chance to make comments. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, but open, again, we're very flexible.
Okay.
Very flexible and, you know, happy to give out my information and discuss offline as well. The neighbors that I did speak to received this piece of paper with the description of what we're looking to do and the picture of the rendering.
Okay, great, and I appreciate you providing it to this particular resident who obviously didn't get that, so that's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, if there's no other comments, I can close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order from the Commission. Mr. Bonjero?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Okay.
The request to rezone the property at 377397 Mile Road from NC to C1 is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval for the following reasons. The petitioner has agreed to voluntarily offer a conditional zoning agreement under MCL 125.3405 of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Act 110 of 2006, which will include a statement of conditions that will limit the use of the property for general office purposes only. Number two, changing the zoning of the property to C1 Local Business and restricting the use of a general office is appropriate, given the unique circumstances of this property, including its size and location. Number three, development of the site consistent with the conceptual plan presented by the petitioner would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and an enhancement. Number four, the proposed zoning change represents a reasonable and logical plan for the subject property that adheres to sound land use planning principles.
All right. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
We have lots of support. I heard Ms. De Naro first, and let's see here, so that is a motion to approve by Mr. Bonjero, supported by Mrs. De Naro. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mrs. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Rochelle?
Votes aye. Motion passes. That will go to City Council with an approving recommendation for the zoning. And again, site plan process will come back at a later date. We'll get into the details of the property and layout, so stay tuned, and we'll see you at the City Council when it goes there. Thank you for coming tonight. And next item we have on our public hearing agenda is item number two.
Petition 2023-08-02-12 submitted by C. and M. Corporation, requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 3.11, 5.01, and 13.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to construct a multi-tenant retail building with a drive-up window at 29150 5 Mile Road located on the north side of 5 Mile Road between Harrison and Middlebelt Road in the southwest quarter of Section 13.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And Mr. Miller?
This site has 100 feet along 5 Mile Road by approximately 220 feet along Cavour Avenue. It is Zone C2, general business. This is the former site of the Wrights Hardware. The Wrights Hardware closed in 2022, and this year was demolished, and the site, with the exception of a concrete parking pad, is currently vacant. The subject site abuts a shopping center to the east, which the same owner of this property also owns the adjacent shopping center. The plan shows a one-story commercial building, about 5,110 square feet. It would be positioned approximately in the middle of the site and would appear to be an extension of the adjacent shopping center. Parking would be located in the north and south sides of the building, and the floor plan shows that the building would be divided up into three units. Drive-through window service is planned along the west side of the building. Access to the building, or access to the site would be by two driveways off of Cavour The service lane for the drive-up window would run along the west side of the proposed Required parking for a building of this size would be 27 parking spaces. The site plan shows 30 parking spaces. It also, as for landscaping, it's a unique site in that it borders three streets. You have 5 Mile to the south, Cavour to the west, and Lancaster Drive to the north. So, landscaping along those street frontages are required. The building materials, it shows that the building would be constructed out of brick and limestone. It would have an architecture with a stepped parapet wall. Eiffel would crown the molding, it would have crown molding at the top of the roof line. You would have canopies over the windows and doors. The dumpster, there's a dumpster on the site which is showed at the northeast corner of the property. All light standards would be 20 feet in height, and that is the extent of the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there correspondence?
Yes. From Linda Shield, City Treasurer, dated September 25th, 2023. In accordance with your request, the Treasurer's Office has reviewed the name and address connected with the above noted petition. At this time, there are no taxes due. Therefore, I have no objections to the proposal. From Connie Kupla, Chief Accountant, dated September 5th, 2023. I've reviewed the addresses connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water and sewer, I have no objections to the proposal. From Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection, dated October 2nd, 2023. Pursued to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. Parking spaces shall be 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep and double striped. Two barrier-free parking spaces are required on the total number of parking spaces provided, which is 30. Barrier-free parking spaces shall be sized and marked in accordance with ANSIA 117.1-2009. Signs shall be in accordance with the Livonia Zoning Ordinance or a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be required. No provisions for dumpster enclosure are shown for this project. The Commission and/or Council may wish to address how trash will be handled on this property. The Department has no further objections to this petition. From Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau, dated August 31st, 2023. I've reviewed the plans in connection with the revised petition. I have no objections to the proposal. Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal, dated September 21st, 2023. The Office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to construct a commercial building on property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal. And finally, from Dave Lear, dated Assistant City Engineer, September 11th, 2023. In accordance with your request, Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel is assigned the address 29150 5 Mile Road. Once drawings have been submitted for permits, the Engineering Department will assign additional addresses if needed. The legal description included with the submitted drawings appears to be correct and should be used in conjunction with the project should the waiver be, waiver use be approved. The existing parcel is currently serviced by a public sanitary sewer, water main and stormwater. The submitted drawings do not include any information regarding proposed services to the building, but we do not believe there will be any negative impacts to the system with the proposed usages. The proposed layout indicates that the existing parking spaces within the Cavour Avenue right-of-way are to remain, which is not allowed. No parking will be allowed within the abutting right-of-ways. The proposed drive aisles in the parking area to the rear of the building do not line up with the existing plaza to the east. The proposed construction shows a 30-foot-wide drive aisle, while the existing drive aisle to the east is the standard 22 feet wide. It would be preferred to have the parking areas and drive aisles match, as long as there is not an underlying reason for an additional drive width. Also, the existing masonry wall should be removed entirely, not just a 20-foot-wide pass-through, so as to create better sightlines when traveling the parking lot. The submitted drawings do not indicate any stormwater information, but the proposed development will be required to meet Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. The developer will need to obtain stormwater permits through Wayne County Department of Public Service prior to construction. No construction or soil disturbance, including dumping of materials, should occur on the site until the owner obtains the appropriate permits. Any working, any work within the 5 Mile right-of-way will require permitting through Wayne County. And that is it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Uhaysey. Is there any questions of our planning staff? Mr. Bonjero?
I just, one thing for the planning staff. It does show on our site plan that there is a dumpster enclosure. I know Mr. Hannah said there wasn't, but there is one.
Yeah, that was, his letter was before we put it in. So, they revised the plan.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Mr. Ventura, did you have something?
Scott, a note in the write-up, the last paragraph, says the main issues raised at the study meeting included the need for professional landscape plan, the overall appearance, and relationship between the architecture and color scheme of the new building compared to the architecture and colors of the existing building that it will attach to, the potential need for a sidewalk walk along Cavour and Lancaster streets, and the extent and treatment of the parapet on the tower portion of the building. These were all discussed at the study meeting. Has the petitioner revised? Have these been addressed by the petitioner?
The only, the only thing that he did change on the elevation plan, the rear elevation, if you look at the new elevations, he raised the parapet wall, I think it's four feet, so that you, but that's the only thing that we've had revision, is that he did extend the parapet wall at that rear elevation, about four feet, so you wouldn't be able to see the rooftop equipment. But that's the only thing he's changed.
So, the balance of these issues are unresolved at this point?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mr. Miller, that, that shows on our plan, I think it says a four-foot metal cap, is that the, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I think that's, is that what the, yes, no, that's a four-inch. I think if you...
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just, the crown, I mean, if you look over at the side, it's four feet extended. The metal cap, I think, is just a decoration along the top.
Okay, the divet crown, or the drive-it crown is the, what you're referring to, then?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we understood what you're referring to. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner is in the audience, feel free to come forward to the podium. If not, our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to the podium. Introduce yourself, name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening. You can set those, you can set those there, and that way our cameras can, our crack camera team can get those on TV as well.
Put them on the floor.
That'll work. That's fine. Perfect. Thank you. That way we can see that on our TV screen as well.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
Hope everybody's good tonight. Alex with MA Design representing Gus in Constantino, Americas. They're the owners of the Plaza to the East that's existing right now, and we're proposing a new development, a new plaza, three units, about five thousand one hundred and ten square feet, as Scott said, right to the west, on the vacant property that's there right now. Maybe I can get into the questions that was brought up and some of the questions that were brought up, and then maybe I can answer what I did revise to the planning department.
I think that'd be a good start, and then we can take questions after that.
Yep. So yeah, as far as the dumpsters, as you can see on the site plan, that dumpster enclosure is provided. As far as the other engineering questions, the wall that's dividing the east property to the west property in the back, that was taken out prior on revision number two. And, you know, and then the sidewalk, I did make a phone call to, I think it was Todd from the Engineering Department. I spoke to him, and he said it's not required, and I emphasized, you sure? Are you going to talk to the planning? And he said, if anything, if I did change my mind or anything like that, I'll make sure I send an email or call you back. He was sure of himself that a sidewalk is not required on Corovore. And you can speak to Todd from Engineering.
Okay.
As far as some of the other items that were brought up about the elevations, the elevation that I did revise, and I sent an email to Mark and Scott, was the building is, what was, the building that I drew is existing, is the same building that I drew from the plans that you have. The only thing that I'm trying to show Mark and trying to express my idea and my thought was that the parapet wall is high already on the drawing. I got a twenty-foot-high wall. I mean, it's a pretty high wall already. I was trying to show to him the line of where the roof, the roof line is. It's at sixteen foot. That's where the metal deck is, and the parapet wall carries four feet higher than that. So that's already within the building look and the building design, the screen is there. It will be screening anything that's behind that four-foot barrier. And it's not changing none of the design that I already created on the drawings that you have and the drawings. You know, I haven't changed anything as far as that. I just showed the line of where the roof line is. As far as the crown and how it carries through the side, it's still, it's going to look like something close to the rendering, but I did revise that, and I showed on the rear elevation the crown, how it's shaped, and how it's cut off at the back of the eight-inch block wall. If you look at the rear elevation, yeah. I hope you can understand it. If you need more explanation, I'll try to show it to you visually with the drawings that I have. Other than that, yeah, if there's any other questions that you want to bring up or anything like that, where the owners I know are happy to try to build something right there to try to make that area more viable, especially with the plaza that they have to the east, and they wanted to accomplish something where it's more of a modern look and something up to date. And they were happy with the design, and we're hoping that you're happy with that design. And I think, I think it'll be a viable thing for them to bring in tenants and to bring more traffic to that area.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Let's see if we have any questions from any of our commissioners for you. Is there any questions? Mr. Bonjero?
The telephone poles, what's going on with those? I know the one is right in the middle of the building envelope, so obviously that's got to be moved, but it doesn't even look like you're getting electrical from those poles. Looks like it's going west.
Yeah, we're going to have to reroute that electric post, and I think there's that. Yeah, please, you can answer probably that a little bit better.
Just introduce yourself, so we know.
Konstantinos Mareskis, VP of Real Estate for CNM Corporation.
Great, thank you.
So with the electrical poles, I talked to DTE already. That electrical actually does not supply the building that we're looking to do. Once we have the site plan approved, we can petition DTE to remove the electrical and reroute it.
Okay. I did have another question, and might go to Scott, but on the existing building that you're attaching to, and let me get even talk about the new one, the rooftop equipment, we don't see anything on it. We're assuming that new parapet four-foot extension is going to cover it, or most of it, right?
Well, the wall's going to be high enough above the roof.
If you can come up so we can hear you on TV as well. Thank you.
Yeah. So what I was just trying to say is the building had, you know, the building back wall, side walls, the side walls are even higher than the back wall. No, and I think they're leveled all the way around, except for the, where the front crown is protruding a little bit upwards more. So the rest of it's all leveled. What I'm trying to say is that if.
Yeah, you can hold that.
The roof line is like up to here, right above that line.
Yeah, I understand that parapet extends up.
Up to there, so it's going to be part of the building, so you're not going to.
I get you. I totally follow that. On the one that it's attaching to, all those rooftop units that service that building are just roof-mounted. They're fully exposed. Are you, is there any intention, or is there any requirement going to Scott possibly that those would have to be screened, or is that something that just slipped through the cracks through the years?
I believe, I mean, it would be hard to just come out of the blue and say, cover those. I mean, I guess, I think they are planning on eventually redoing that center.
I guess that's my question. Is there plans for future improvements on the existing building?
Oh, on the existing building. Well, that's something maybe he can ask.
So we are looking at that right now. We're kind of focused. We have, this is step one of what we're looking to do, is this new center. We wanted something more modern, something more open. That's been a big negative from any showings we've done or any other tenants we've tried to contract, especially larger tenants or more established tenants. So we wanted to do more of a modern look with this. Step two, as was mentioned, I believe Mr. Ventura mentioned it, was there's a parking issue that we have in the back. That's going to be resolved with another parcel that we have further east of that, behind these strip malls, which is going to be the next development we're focusing on, and then we want the middle to all come together eventually. I don't have a exact timeline on that.
Yeah. And I'm not asking it to be done. I'm just saying, I don't know how that got missed, because it's literally, they're right on the roof.
That was prior to my time working there, so my dad might be able to answer that, but.
It's okay. I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ventura?
The other questions I asked at the study session, one revolved around redoing the site plan, landscaping as Mr. Torre Mina requested. What, I don't see any movement on that.
Okay, so yeah, the landscaping plan, I mean, we're, we answered all the questions regarding the number of plants and all that. The only question was about the species, so the species of the, so the kind of tree or the kind of shrub that we're going to be using. So yeah, I'm going to be hiring a landscape architect. I just, in one week, I couldn't really get ahold of one that quick and get them going, but eventually, yeah, if you can approve a contingent upon having a landscape architect, we would appreciate that. But one will be hired.
So you're planning on doing it?
Oh, for sure.
Right. Thank you. The other question was that the Mexican restaurant appears to be stopped in terms of completing the construction, and the windows are papered over, and the paper is falling down, and it's, looks like it's been there for quite a long time. Can you give us an idea of when you anticipate that to be complete?
So that's at the other property, right? It's the third property. From my knowledge, it is not stopped. They've only been under construction for two months. They're actually working remarkably fast for a restaurant. I have not been told anything about them being stopped. I know they were doing a lot of inside work as far as building the counters. I have not heard of anything being stopped. I met with him last week, and he had not mentioned that they were stopped.
So you anticipate that to be completed in the relatively near future?
I, last, when I spoke to him last week, he was hoping by the end of the month he would open. I haven't heard anything to convince me otherwise. If anything, two months tops. But to do a restaurant build-out in there in two months is quite, he's working quite quickly.
Yeah, there's a lot of detail. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Care Magna?
I've got a couple of questions, a couple of concerns. The sidewalk is a concern of mine, especially if there's going to be a drive-through on the western side of this property. I know this big apartment complex behind there to the north, and I'm sure there's a lot of foot traffic that comes through there up and down this Five Mile Road, and I would envision they probably walk through that parking lot in some ways, so sidewalk's going to be an issue with me. The dumpster location is also an issue with me at this point. I don't think there's enough room. I don't know what that measurement looks like exactly, but visually at this point, that dumpster location is far too tight for a truck to service the dumpster the way it sits now. Have you looked at it and measured it to see what's going to be required?
I mean, usually I don't like to put the dumpster closer to the street where it's visible, so that's why I put it more on the inside of the property. But another suggestion, and the owner really would like this, but I drew it in there because that was required by the planning department. He would like to utilize the dumpster that he has next door and have a shared dumpster. Even if he had to enlarge it, he would like to keep the dumpster for the whole center in one spot. I don't know if that's something you would be in favor of.
Well, if there's a dumpster required for this property, I think it's probably logical that it be there. What I'm saying is the location of is a terrible location, the way it sits here. And I realize you don't want it by the street, but putting it in a location that cannot be serviced properly doesn't help anybody. It creates more problems than it's worth, so that's my second concern. And I have a question for you about the drive-through. You started telling us a little bit about that last time, what exactly the drive-through, what your vision or thought is for the drive-through. Tell us a little more about that.
Yeah. As far as the tenants and what he's looking for, I guess, yeah, you could probably answer that a little bit more.
So with the drive-through, we were just kind of taking a look at what could, up until we purchased this property and had demolished Wright's Hardware, we had a hard time filling the property. Part of that was Wright's Hardware was jettisoning out, and it was blocking visibility, which was another complaint we had heard from a lot of tenants that were looking at the property. We're trying to figure out a way to maximize the potential of the property, and one of the things that we came up with was a drive-through. There is no drive-through on that side of Five Mile. I think that's our opportunity to get some type of either drugstore anchor. We're not really looking ideally for any type of fast-food type place. We're either looking for more of a pickup window or some type of drugstore. I had conversations with somebody, I think I mentioned this at the study meeting, about a drive-through flower shop, something just to spur a little bit more foot traffic into the property, something to be a little bit more of an anchor and cap for the property.
Okay, so when you say drugstore for pharmaceuticals and things like that, or a flower shop, I understand that that's unique, but what is the order board for that's behind it? What are you going to order? Viagra and OxyContin?
That was just something we put in. I want to leave it as open as possible to any type of concept that can come through. So we just put that into the plan, because if it is someone who is doing some type of food service, we want to have that opportunity ideally. We think we can facilitate that opportunity.
So you're pushing it towards a flower shop or a, or a.
To be honest, I'm marketing this.
Pharmacy, but you put this in there just in case it.
To be honest, I'm trying to market this as wide as I possibly can. I would like to ideally try to fill the property as fast as possible upon building it. I have my preferences, but if, like Al said, if a coffee shop does come in, they would need some type of order board. I would like to be able to facilitate that and market it towards that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna. Any other questions for our petitioner? I think we've covered all our questions that we have. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't believe so. Is there anything else that you guys would like to say before we make our decision?
I mean, if you have big concerns about the dumpster enclosure, you could try, I mean, if you have, if you could suggest anything where you would like that dumpster, we can place it anywhere that's in favor for you, you know, for the commissioners.
I, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I understand. Certainly don't want to.
I just tried to put it away from the sight of the public, where they're driving up and down the street. Now, if you want to bring it on the opposite side toward the building, I think maybe that's a better idea. That would be even away from the people that are in the back, but it's going to be buffered with landscape anyways, and we can buffer it more all the way around the screen wall with more landscaping. When I hire the landscape architect, I'll make sure he buffers it with ivoritis or whatever he suggests.
Yeah, I'm less interested about buffering it at this point, and I certainly don't want to use this meeting to redesign your plan. I think there's a lot of shortcomings here which you presented tonight, and I think there's probably something better out there. So that's my opinion.
All right, yeah, I think we can work on that as we go forward with this. Thank you. If there's nothing else from the commission or the petitioner, then I can close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Care Magna?
I'd like to offer up a tabling motion for this case, two zero two three dash zero eight dash zero two dash one two, for more detailed information.
Okay. Would you like to make that to a date certain or give the petitioner time to?
Give the petitioner a little time. He's already had trouble getting a landscape architect.
Okay. We'll leave that as an open-ended date. The petitioner would be able to work with the planning department to get that on an upcoming agenda based on the recommendation made by Mr. Care Magna. Is there support for that motion?
No support.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Care Magna to a date unknown, supported by Mr. Ventura. There is no discussion on tabling motions. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Care Magna votes aye. Mr. Ventura? Votes aye. Mrs. DeNaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
No.
Mr. Wolschaw?
Aye. The motion passes. The item has been tabled. Please contact our planning department, and they will work with you to get you onto one of our next study agendas, and we can continue the discussion and try to get these items resolved and then get you back for a vote, okay?
So the only thing you're looking for is the landscape, the landscape plan?
Well, talk to our planning staff. There's a number of deficiencies that were brought up at the meeting tonight, and they can outline those with you to make sure you address all of them, okay? All righty. That takes care of item two on our agenda. We now move on to Ms. Laney's items, item number three.
Petition two zero two three dash zero nine dash zero eight dash zero seven submitted by Sauve Homes, requesting approval of the master deed bylaws and site plan under section seven point two seven of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended to develop a site condominium called Baki Estates, consisting of five single-family homes on the properties of three six one four three, three six one five five, and three six one six seven Parkdale Avenue, located on the south side of Parkdale Avenue between Arthur Avenue and Levan Road in the northeast quarter of section thirty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Miller?
The subject site consists of three parcels. All three parcels are undeveloped currently. The zoning of the all three parcels is N one neighborhood, which requires a minimum lot area of six thousand square feet with lot dimensions of fifty feet in width by a hundred and twenty feet in depth. The surrounding area, the entire site is surrounded by a single-family residential. The site plan shows five new house sites. Units one through four would measure fifty-two feet by one hundred and twenty feet for a total of six thousand two hundred and forty feet. Unit five, which would be the westernmost unit on the corner of Parkdale and Levan, would measure sixty feet, sixty point ninety-one feet by a hundred and twenty feet for a total lot area of seven thousand three hundred and nine feet. And that is the extent of the proposal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. We have correspondence for this item?
Yes, from Linda Shields City Treasurer dated October second, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with your request, the treasurer's office has reviewed the name and addresses connected with the above noted petition. At this. connected with the above noted petition. At this time, there are no taxes due. Therefore, I have no objections to the proposal. Uh, from Connie Kupla, Chief Accountant, dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. I have reviewed the addresses connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general ore water and sewer, I have no objections to the proposal. From Jerome Hanna, dated October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. This department has no objection to this From Paul Wal- Walters, Sergeant Traffic Bureau, dated October fifth, twenty twenty-three. I reviewed the plans in connection with the revised petition. I have no objections to proposal. Please feel free to contact me with, should you have any questions. Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal, dated September twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. The office has reviewed the site plan submitted in conjunction, or in connection with a request to construct residential buildings on the property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal. Thank you for the details on the fire hydrant replacement. Lastly, from David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. We'd like to note the following items. The subject parcels are assigned the addresses of three six, one four three, three six, one five five, and three six, one six seven Parkdale Avenue. Once the development has been approved and permits are issued, the Engineering Department will assign addresses to the individual units. The legal descriptions included with this submitted drawings appear to be correct with the exception of the description of the westernly parcel, one six, one six seven Parkdale, which excludes the west thirty-three feet for Levan Road right-of-way. As of this time, the right, roadway right-of-way has not been dedicated to the city and should be considered part of the parcel. If the descriptions are meant to convey the legal descriptions once the condominium has been developed, there should be one overall description for the entire condominium parcel and not three separate descriptions. The existing parcel is currently serviced by public water main and public storm water. Will be extended to the site by the city. Public sanitary sewer is located on the neighboring parcel to the southeast, but the developer will need to obtain additional easements from these property owners to extend the sanitary sewer to the condominium property as shown. The width of the existing easements do not meet the current minimum standards. And our proposed, and the proposed angle of the sanitary extension will require additional easements to, to dedicated, dedicated to allow for future maintenance. We do not believe the additional flow from the development will negatively impact the existing systems. The owner and his engineer have been in contact with the department on requirements for the proposed development and review comments of the first plan submitted have been provided by, to the owner slash engineer. The proposed development will be required to meet the storm, or Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. Per the submitted drawings, stormwater calculations and detentions are not shown on the submitted drawing. Per the proposed layout, all storm water or storm sewer, including detention basins, will be privately owned. Sanitary sewer and water will be public, located within dedicated easements on the site or in the existing right-of-way. Easements will need to be of minimum width as required in the Engineering Department's site plan design standards. No additional construction or soil disturbance, including W materials, should occur on the site until the, the owner obtains the appropriate permits. Master deeds and bylaws that were submitted do not include the reference exhibit form B drawings as reference of the master deed. As those drawings define the size and location of the proposed easements, we do not, we are not able to review those items at this time. The permit drawings do not, do show proposed easement locations and have been previously returned with comments to the owner slash engineer. And that is all.
That was a lot to read. Thank you for that. Uh, is there any questions of our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
For Scott. Um, do we know how far apart the home spacing is?
Uh, they're showing seven feet, so it would be about fourteen feet.
But, but is that, that's kind of, um, confusing because it's seeing, I mean, I guess each lot is sixty-two hundred square feet, right?
Right.
So it's, they're going to be fourteen feet, each house will be fourteen feet apart?
Yeah, because it'd be seven feet on each lot, so it's fourteen.
Because the arrow is pointing to the building envelope, and I don't know if that's the actual building or-
No, that's just, I mean, they could build a, I, I, most houses aren't exactly the size of that envelope, but that's where they could build it, inside there, so.
Okay. Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carey-Magnu.
The, the, this, this version is showing fifty-foot wide lots for the, for the four eastern lots. Was that changed to fifty-two?
Yes. Yeah, it should be, uh, it's, 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 I thought I'd sent them to you, but that's the new, they're all fifty-two except for the one is sixty.
Okay, so the four are fifty-twos and then the one is almost a sixty-nine?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey-Magnu. That's a good question. Is there any other questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner is represented. Mr. Duggan is here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Brian Duggan, one four three, one five. Danny Livonia, Michigan, four eight, one five four. How you guys doing tonight?
Good, good. Thank you.
Good. Yes, uh, Mr. Tormento called me and they worked out a, a, a different site plan. He wanted to go with the fifty-two foot instead of the fifty, shrink down the corner one because we still had plenty of setbacks. So, um, the planning commission's on board and, and far as I know, the engineering is on board with all that changes. And I did not go across the street and measure houses because Mark told me not to do that, so.
You didn't want to be out there with your wheel and-
Uh, well, I had no problem doing it, but he told me not to, so.
Probably not the best idea. All right, good. Well, thank you for, uh, providing that updated information. Uh, is there any questions for our planning or for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura?
Just, just for the edification and elucidation everywhere, everyone here, I did measure the distance between the houses across the street, and they're fifteen and a half feet apart. So, not very different than what the petitioner was proposing.
Uh-huh. So you used Mr. Duggan's wheel?
No, I wish I wouldn't have done that.
My laser, my laser.
Do you? Wow, look at you. You've moved up the lasers now.
Thank you.
I have a wheel in my car from the spring, so I can walk it.
All right. Well, that's good information. Thank you. Uh, any other questions, comments from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carey-Magnu.
Brian, the, the, the pictures, the renderings that you showed of the houses, uh, they're, they got a lot of brick on them. Is that only on the front or will that be along the sides as well?
No, that's only on the front.
It's only on the front. What are the sides? Siding, top to bottom or what?
Siding, yes, top to bottom at this point.
So no brick on, no brick on the sides at all?
And that's not what he's doing lately over there in the Dundee property. That's what he's kind of doing.
Mr. Uh, Miller, regarding that subject, I thought that requirement for brick on all four sides used to be part of our, uh, ordinance. Is that still in there?
I don't think it is anymore. We used to just condition it like eighty percent for the story and I think it's sixty percent. I forget what we did, but usually we did like eighty percent for the first wall.
Yeah, it's pretty standard verbiage for us to have. Okay.
So if you want to add that into your conditions, just to make, you know.
Okay, so that could be a condition. Okay.
Yeah, or we could just do a two-foot belt on the sides and the back and the front brick. That's kind of attractive looking, this, but.
All right, yeah. Certainly that's, uh, well, you know more than anybody, Mr. Duggan, the, the character of, uh, homes in the, in the, in this city versus, uh, many of the other communities. So we, you know we like our brick.
I know you do. I remember, I remember Mr. Jordan came and he says, "I'm going to wear a brick suit one day," so.
I can believe it. All right. Uh, any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? I see no other questions. There's no one else in the audience, uh, to speak on this item. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Duggan?
I don't. Just feel free. If you want to make some changes, I like to walk out with their approval on this forum, so.
Okay. All right. Uh, well, let's see what happens when we go back to the commission and offers, see if someone will offer a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Go for it, Mr. Ventura.
I'll offer an approving resolution.
We're going to be here for a little bit.
Um, as soon as I find it. Request to develop a site condominium on the properties at thirty-six, one forty-three, thirty-six, one fifty-five, and thirty-six, one sixty-seven Parkdale Avenue is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. And I'm going to, I'm going to make a change in number one here, Scott, to change the date-
Okay.
On the site plan.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, number one, site plan identified as, uh, I'm not sure what the sheet number is. Uh, you can put that in there, right?
Yeah, yes, we'll, we'll correct it.
Dated, uh, October thirteenth, nine, twenty twenty-three, uh, prepared by RP Donan Incorporated is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. For two all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sanded in lieu of hydro seating. Number three, sidewalks shall be provided along Parkdale and Levan as determined by the Engineering Department. Number four, the condominium master deed and bylaws comply with the requirements of the subdivision control ordinance tile sixteen, chapter sixteen dot oh four through sixteen dot four zero of Livonia Code of Ordinances and section seven dot two seven of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended. Number five, the petitioner will include language in the master deed and bylaws that requires the condominium association to reimburse the city of Livonia for any maintenance or repair costs incurred for the stormwater detention, retention, and outlet facilities, and gives the city the right to impose liens in the event the charges are not paid within thirty days. Number six, the site shown either the City of Livonia or the Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and the developer shall secure a soil erosion and sedimentation control permit before commencing any grade activities on the site. That word is grading activities on the site. Number seven, the developer and all contractors and subcontractors shall employ best management practices to prevent, reduce, reduce and mitigate the problems associated with soil erosion and airborne dirt and dust from migrating off-site, including provisions for erosion control barriers, daily street sweeping, watering, and halting earthwork and, uh, activities on days when the wind conditions are likely to cause a problem. Number eight, only a conforming entrance marker is approved with this petition and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number nine, all cash, all required cash deposits, certified checks, irrevocable bank letters of credit and/or surety bonds shall be posted with the city prior to the issuance of engineering permits. And number ten, pursuant to section thirteen dot thirteen of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Was there support?
Support.
All right. We have a motion on the table from Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carey-Magnu.
Hey, now, I don't remember the houses in the neighborhood. Are they all brick? Have they got brick on the sides?
Is that a question to-
Neighborhood houses?
Mr. Ms.
Does anybody know, anybody recall?
Mr. Miller, do you happen to know?
I didn't look. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I-
There is brick on some of the houses, some of the houses.
Is there a, a lot of them siding right to the grass?
Yeah, some of them are.
Are they? Okay. Well, maybe, maybe, maybe this matches. And then my second question is the entrance marker, the conforming entrance marker, number eight. This is for the condominium? Is that what that's for?
Yes, correct. It's for the-
Is it, is it required for a five-unit condominium? Is it necessary?
No, it just, we just put it in there, make sure it's conform if they want to use one. They don't have to put one in.
Okay. All right. That's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey-Magnu. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Just as, as we come back, the office showed me some pictures. They're sure these, these houses are, in the neighborhood are all brick. And there's these sides and back got nothing on them.
Okay.
I think to the west they're not, though. And I think the new subdivision built back in the east they're not.
All right. Thank you.
All right. If, uh, everyone's satisfied and if there's no other amendments or changes to the, uh, motion to approve, I think the secretary can call the roll.
Uh, who seconded that?
Uh, that was, uh, Mr. Long.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. DeNaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Carey-Magnu votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council and approve a recommendation.
Thank you.
Good luck on your project.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. We have, uh, item number four on our agenda next.
Uh, item four is petition two zero two two dash one two dash zero one dash zero two submitted by Basilica of St. Mary. This is a formal withdrawal request for the portion of the petition to rezone from public land to N M three I, neighborhood multifamily maximum four stories.
So item is currently on our table. Is someone willing to make a motion to remove this from the table so we can discuss it?
Make a motion?
All right. And it's, uh, supported by, support, Mr. Long. That's Bonjero and Long to remove item from table. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show six to remove this item from the table. That now allows us to, uh, no objection noted. So we will now be able to discuss this item. Mr. Miller, uh, any updates or information that you'd like to provide on this?
No, they just, they just formally asked to withdraw.
Okay. Yes, we did receive a letter. It's in our packet from the petitioner asking to formally, uh, withdraw this petition, uh, from our agenda. Uh, we do honor those requests. Is someone willing to make a motion to accept the withdrawal without any prejudice? The petitioner would be able to resubmit in a future date if they, if they choose to.
So moved.
That motion's been made by Mr. Long. Is there support?
Support.
By, uh, Ms. DeNaro. Uh, that is to withdraw this, uh, petition. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll on that.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. DeNaro?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Carey-Magnu votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye. Motion passes. I figured that might happen, but I just wanted to be on the safe side and make sure we had that roll call in there. Thank you for indulging me. We do have one item left on our agenda. Uh, Mr. Secretary?
Approval of the minutes of the one thousand two hundred and fourth public hearing, a regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
All members of that, uh, of the commission were present with the exception of Mr. DeNaro. Is there, uh, someone willing to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Carey-Magnu, supported by-
Support. Bonjero.
We'll give it to Mr. Bonjero. That's, uh, Carey-Magnu and Bonjero. Again, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show five to approve those minutes. I see no one objecting.
Got it.
Ms. DeNaro will abstain on that. Thank you. And, uh, that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the Planning Commission? I see no other business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Ms. DeNaro and supported by-
Support.
Mr. Bonjero. And again, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show six on that, uh, motion to adjourn. That does take us to the end of our meeting this evening. I do want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting, uh, to the community. And, uh, this is our last meeting, uh, at least a regular meeting that we will have. Uh, we do have a study meeting next week, and then we'll have a couple of weeks off. So those two weeks will be for Halloween and for Election Day. So, uh, certainly anyone in the community, I hope you enjoy those, uh, two days. Make sure to go vote, and, uh, we'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you and good night, Livonia. Oh, by the way, uh, adjourn time will be eight twenty-one P M. Thank you. Good night.